Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Dibala, Councilmember Kostick, Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Serse.
Good evening, everyone. There is no change to our agenda tonight. Looking forward to our meetings coming up next Wednesday, February 13th. We're actually starting our meeting at 6:00 PM when the City Council will meet prior to our public meeting at 7:30 with the department heads to discuss the City Council priorities. We just had two of our priority-setting sessions in the last few weeks. So that'll go from 6:00 to 7:30. It will be in the Azalea Room, and that is open to the public if people want to come and listen to that discussion. Then we'll come in here at 7:30 and start our regular weekly meeting. Our voting session consists of first reading ordinance approving the FY 2019 Budget Amendment Number Three, a resolution amending Resolution 2018-63 regarding Montgomery College Math and Science Building to clarify that no change in the width of the Fenton Street right away is needed by the city. We have two work sessions on February 13th. One is a report out on our council retreats, and the other is a discussion of committee appointments. On Wednesday, February 20th, we're back here at 7:30. Our voting session that night is a second reading ordinance approving the FY 2019 Budget Amendment Number Three, a resolution providing for appointments to committees. And that will take us to the end of February. As always, please check the city website for any updates in our agenda. And tonight, we actually -- oh, we actually do have the adoption of the minutes, correct? From December 5th. So first, we will do that. Would someone like to move adoption of the minutes from December 5th City Council meeting? Councilwoman Dibala move. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick, second. Any changes, discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes from December 5th City Council meeting, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? All right, we have adopted the minutes. All right. Now we'll move on to our presentation this evening. We have a guest with us, Chuck Bean, who's the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, or better known as COG, to all of us who serve on its committees, will tell us more about the Council of Governments. And so Chuck, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and members of the council. It's great to be with you all tonight. I see a number of frequent faces at the Council of Governments on North Capitol, whether it's a participation with the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Committee, or active participation with the Transportation Planning Board, the COG Board of Directors, or chairing the Chesapeake Bay Water Resources Policy Committee. It's great to be with you all. Broadly speaking, we're the Council of Governments for this metropolitan area. This is about 3,700 square miles, about 5.6 million people. We count as members both the jurisdictions, so 24 member jurisdictions. And when we say member, we also mean the elected officials of the jurisdiction, so about 300 elected official members of COG. One of our core challenges as the Council of Governments and also the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region is trying to facilitate planning amongst our members for our shared future. We experience about 50,000 additional jobs in this region, and with jobs comes the need for housing, comes the need for transportation and infrastructure. So we try to level set with technical analysis what that would look like so we can lift up to you all elected officials and your counterparts from the other 23 jurisdictions, how we can envision the best future possible. I have a short video that, if you'll indulge me, will just take two minutes, and that'll take about 10 minutes off my presentation. Let's see if I can -- your expert IT person told me how to do this, but my finger's not quite working here. Not getting the arrow here. He made it look so easy five minutes ago.
Sixty years ago, the governments of the region came together to form COG, and we're still meeting today. The future of the region is our business, and collaboration is how we get there.
The Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments is a regional body that convenes elected officials from all over the Washington metropolitan area.
We all call it affectionately in this region COG, and then as a Council of Governments is a facilitator of regional opportunity.
I think if I were to try to describe COG in one word, it would be unify.
Yes, COG is a forum for discussion, but I think we're also a forum for regional problem-solving. Coming through our doors are the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, the housing directors, transportation experts, environmental experts, making their cities and counties better and making the region a better place.
COG has something for everyone, if it's transportation, if it's environmental, if it's emergency preparedness and public safety. All of those things are things that COG addresses.
We're a very dynamic region, and that's what makes us a great place to live and work.
And one of our major regional challenges, planning how we're going to accommodate an additional 1.5 billion people, and that is part of all of our work.
It's all about infrastructure. Your economy is based on how people get from place to place to trade goods and services.
The Transportation Planning Board, TPB, at COG has really been at the center of the region's efforts at improving transportation, promoting transportation efficiency.
COG staff are experts in their field. There are urban planners and civil engineers, even biologists and emergency management professionals.
It has been an invaluable opportunity for the city of Rockville. We have been able to access research, data, expertise, have conversations that we wouldn't have just on our own.
Whether you're the District of Columbia, you're Loudoun County, you're Charles County, everyone has a seat at the table.
Leading political figures in each of our jurisdictions are here on the COG board, and so if you want to get something done, this is where you get things done.
50/50 chance that I'm going to get us back here. A second. So 1,000 to 1,500 folks enter our doors every month, and at the top of that food chain, if you will, are the elected officials, but fire chiefs, police chiefs, and subcommittees of those. I was bringing a delegation from another state passing through. Let's just poke in on the recycling committee, and I guess in my mind I thought it'd be about 15 people in there, but there was 100 there in the boardroom. So it's a place to share best practices, makes us all more efficient, and it's a place to ask the question, if we did this together, would it be better? Would it be more efficient, or would it be more effective for the region? And, you know, there's three independent boards, the COG Board, TPB, which is the MPO, the Metropolitan Air Quality Committee, and there are policy committees that are established by the Board, such as the one I mentioned, Chesapeake Bay Water Resources Policy Committee. You know, we call it technical committees. These are the appointed officials, and the top of that food chain, if you will, would be the CIOs, the City County Managers Committee, and City Manager Ludlow is an active leader within that group. About our organization, we have about 130 staff. Our budget, including pass-through funding, is about 56 million. Transportation is our largest department, followed by environmental programs, which is inclusive of air quality, water quality, and when I say water, I mean drinking water security, wastewater, stormwater management, community planning and services, which includes core planning functions, housing, health, and then homeland security and public safety coordination. We're the MPO, and just as background, there's almost 300 MPOs across the country, and the way that things work very simplified is any urbanized area of 50,000 people or more must have an MPO. And the MPO is the one that constructs a six-year transportation plan for the region and a 25-year transportation plan for the region on a rolling basis. And for any locality to receive federal funding for any transportation project, it has to be within that plan. So there's a major carrot for participating within the MPO. There's lots more that I could say about that, but if you invite me back sometime, I could talk about that. Otherwise, Casey can fill you in on the activities of the TPB. A little bit more closer to home, COG and Tacoma Park. Tacoma Park has applied in the past and received funding from our Transportation Land Use Connections Program, or TLC, $60,000 grant to New Hampshire Avenue Bike Way. TLC grants proposals are now open, so there will be another round in 2019. The city's also received funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program, primarily on safe routes to school. And more broadly, we have funding for enhanced mobility. Some nonprofit organizations that serve this city, as well as the larger county, have received funding from enhanced mobility, including Regency Taxi, that received more than $200,000. Montgomery County Union Taxi Cooperative, which achieved several hundred thousand dollars for wheelchair-accessible taxis. Often, it's a -- becomes more clear for jurisdictions working together to get a common message out, well, rather than us doing it by ourselves, what if we pooled our funding together to get the media buys, to get the messaging, to do that community engagement? So that's what happens with Streetsmart, police chiefs many years ago said, "We should be doing this together." So this promoting pedestrian bicycle safety, Streetsmart through the Council of Governments. We also operate Commuter Connections for the region. It's actually a footprint larger than the region that we run Commuter Connections for, and guaranteed ride home, so that citizens are -- have an extra incentive or support to participate in Commuter Connections. And if I'm thinking, should I join Commuter Connections? Should I get in a van pool? What if I need to get home to a sick child in the middle of the day? The Guaranteed Ride Home program pays for my taxi to get home in the middle of the day. So it's a support, and it's encouragement incentive to join Commuter Connections. Some of these community engagement campaigns that we do on behalf of the region, working not only with municipalities, but also with water and sewer authorities, the Protect Your Pipes Program, Take Back Pills Day, Medication Take Back Day, and also promoting the TAPIT Program, availability of drinking water throughout the region. Turning to a different area, emergency preparedness. COG operates the RIC system, the Regional Incident Coordination Communication System, text, email, other modes for getting information out, and one, if one is a public official, one can subscribe to different aspects, different kind of listservs, I might call it, but I might be a generation behind when I call it that. And I think there are 10 officials in Tacoma Park that are part, subscribed to the RIC system. We also convene conference calls on snow and other emergencies. 16 last year, we've had a handful this year. And it's a way, whether it's at 10:00 PM at night or 3:00 AM in the morning, for National Weather Service, Office of Personnel Management, D.M.V., WMA, Mark VRE, to all be on the line at the same time. Office of Public Works from the various jurisdictions giving what will be the road conditions that such and such are with this kind of forecast. So the decision-makers are getting the right information at the right time, hopefully to make the right decisions. Weather doesn't always cooperate with the forecast, but we do our best with these conference calls that may have 100 to 200 officials from around the region sharing that information at that time. Ways to save money is through the, either the COG rider clause. So if Fairfax buys something, the city of Tacoma Park can ride that same contract. That's the COG rider clause. Or we might initiate from the outset several jurisdictions buying something together to get that negotiating power, that economy of scale. And happy to make information available to any of you on some of these programs. Self-contained breathing apparatus, we respond. These are examples of responding to COG membership committees. What do you need? What can we procure better together than we could alone? So first responders have services as something, and I think we're, the RFP has been let, we're about ready to close on that. So I think in conclusion, Tacoma Park punches way above its weight class for participation at the Council of Governments and participation in taking advantage of the opportunities like the Transportation Land Use Connections and Transportation Alternatives Program. I'm not sure that I have any advice about how this city could be more involved, but nonetheless, I wanted to be here tonight to share a few minutes with you so that folks would know what I know about the opportunities to become involved. So Mayor Stewart, Council, happy to answer questions and talk about any other regional topic you might be interested in.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Bean. Anyone have any questions or comments? I think as we're waiting -- oh, Councilmember Kovar. Go ahead.
Thank you for coming, Chuck. Appreciate it. Just a couple of quick things. You mentioned the Safe Routes to Schools grants. Do you have more information on what the specific cycle for that is?
I don't know when the next one would be coming up. I'm looking at the --
Well, you can get back later, it's fine.
Yeah, that's right.
That was something I was curious about. On the emergency communications issues and so on, one of the things we hear about a lot is the 911 problem at borders, particularly with cell phones, and I just wonder, I know it's not something that you personally or even COG can literally solve because there's a technology angle to it, but just curious what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I think we have a better answer now than we did a few years ago, and hopefully in a couple of years, we'll have even better answers. What I mean by that is, we didn't have a 911 directors committee several years ago. And when there was the outage, it became the top of everyone's agenda. So the 911 directors meet regularly at COG. I think the chair of that committee this year is from Charles County. The aspiration is that the region will move from current 911 to next-generation 911, so not be dependent on copper wires, if you will. And I think they, moving to that next phase, my understanding is there's a better chance for interoperability. So if one center goes down, the next jurisdiction can take it over. And I think there's a work that's been done in the last year or so, and I'm forgetting the technical term, but to, there's a technical advancement to hone in on the cell calls, the calls to cell towers, and where they originate from. But I'd be happy to get back for you.
Okay. And then just one last question, thank you. I remember when I was at one of the transportation meetings earlier at COG, this question of road salt came up, and whether there are alternatives that are, I don't know, less salty, forms of salt that are less harmful for the environment. I don't know whether that's, if you don't have that at the top of your mind, that's fine, but it was just something I was curious about, hearing about.
I forget which committee, but this is an ongoing topic of conversation, and I think it just takes one jurisdiction to indicate a preference. We are looking for not quite this product, but for this product, and there might be three other jurisdictions say, "We're looking for that, for that too." And I think if you're looking at, is there a more environmentally friendly road salt? This is an issue of common concern, and if interested, I could follow up on that particular issue. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah, I think the road salt item is on the Bay Committee meeting for Wednesday through, for March, so remind me to share that with you.
Okay, we'll do it.
Yeah, thank you for coming, and I've been very impressed with COG and its ability to involve people, not just elected officials, but senior leaders, fire chiefs, everybody. And the quality of your staff is really high. I wanted to, money always gets my attention, and so I think the city is hoping to take advantage of one of the contract riders to do this, to do the update for the Sustainable Energy Plan through the Environment Committee, Energy Environment Committee contract. So that's great. That'll save us some money there. And I wondered about the Transportation Lane Use Grants. Where would we find information about, we know?
Yep. I think in the board packet that went out just a couple of hours ago, there's information about that in our chairman's remarks, and he'll talk about that next Wednesday.
I can send it to you. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I want to echo the thanks from my colleagues, and especially thanks for your involvement and involving groups like the Access for All Committee, for example, that really brings people together to focus on equity in transportation, which I think is fantastic. I just wanted to make a quick note. You mentioned here the Streetsmart campaign, and that's something that, after attending one of the TPB meetings, I mentioned to staff, and they are looking into possibly trying to donate some media so that we could have some of the visual posters showing, you know, some of the horrific images of the people with car tracks over their faces, so that we can try to get out the word to people to be careful and drive slower and watch out, don't cross the street, without finding a safe place to do it. So thank you for all of that.
If I may, one big picture on the transportation work, and then segue to a little bit of a different topic. Transportation Planning Board has really gone through, I don't know if anyone's perceived it, but a metamorphosis over the last three or four years. And the way that we did this 25-year plan for the first 48 years was really, we used the term constrained long-range plan. So only projects that had reasonable funding stream got included in that plan. So nobody's wish list, but without having anybody's wish list, we didn't have that middle area of consensus around aspirations. So now, for the first time, last year, the TPB approved a constrained element. This is an expectation of $291 billion of funding, but aspirational elements that would make things better. And we looked at 100 different policies, programs, and projects, whittled it down to 10, the TPB whittled them down to five, approved those, added two additional non-motorized projects, bicycle initiatives, bicycle Beltway, bicycle network, basically, and it became Visualize 2045. So when we did this last time, we had the constrained long-range plan. The average citizen, what is, how do we, and now we have Visualize 2045, which just says, "If we do these five things on top of this current plan, we'll have better outcomes." Another thing that I think TPB has done better the last few years, equity emphasis areas. So looking at census tract, and really about an 18-month analysis of census tracts, low-income racial minorities, who bears the benefit, the brunt of this plan, and doing the modeling on that. That work, along with the work of the Chief Health Officers Committee, looking at social determinants of health in this region, those two things, along with an initiative that Tacoma Park, along with eight other jurisdictions, looking more intentionally at racial equity in policymaking, we intend to collaborate with the Government Alliance for Racial Equity. So appreciate City Manager Ludlow, Mayor Stewart's others' involvement in that effort. So there's been some good things happening, and more, I hope, good things to come.
Great. Thank you, Chuck, and I'm glad you, actually, that was going to be one of my questions for you to highlight the racial equity work, because I'm glad that the work that we're doing in the city, and now Montgomery County is doing, is actually going regional, and so that's exciting to see. The other thing in just a few moments, if you could talk about the housing priority now that COG has been looking at, particularly since the board meeting last July?
Yeah. Well, at first blush, job growth and the percentage of job growth, job growth rate, sounds great, but when the rate of job growth outpaces the rate of housing production or preservation of production, well, then you get a housing shortfall. So to put some numbers behind that, there's about over 300,000 people that commute from outside our region to those jobs in our region. So that pain every day is felt on 270 and 66 and 95 and other places. So the aspiration from the Transportation Planning Board is, how do we get that housing closer to those jobs? So to quantify what COG staff, what we have said is the shortfall, is, well, there's about two, 2.1 million housing units in the region right now, and our forecast indicates another 650,000 over the next 25 years. That's not enough. And what would be enough, we say, would be an additional 100,000. So we're really undertaking a regional initiative to bend the curve from 650 to 750, or adding 100,000 additional units. And I think there's three aspects of that. One is, can we do that? Can additional 100 be added? Well, we're going to hear that at the board meeting next Wednesday. The second iteration of that will be, if we can do that, how much of that 100,000 could be on high-capacity transit nodes or in regionally designated activity centers? So it's on the infrastructure that we have. And then the third wave of that will be, if we've looked at amount, we've looked at location affordability, and looking at, I think how this will take shape is, looking at the income bands of the jobs that we expect over the next 20, 25 years, and looking at the cost bands, meaning the types of housing, and where do we see the matches? So if it's under $800 in rent or mortgage for that income band versus another cost band, where do we see the mismatches? Some of folks have talked about the missing middle, whether that's the type of housing from apartments, major apartments to single-family, the missing middle type of housing. Sometimes the missing middle is referred to as kind of the camel hump between some housing that's assisted or subsidized, and that is market rate, but that kind of missing middle. So that wasn't so brief, but that's kind of an arc of where we've come from the last six months, and where we hope to go over the next nine months with this analysis.
Great. I'm looking forward to the board meeting on Wednesday. Terrific. I just want to say thank you from all of us. And, you know, a few years ago, I think it was three or four years ago, when we started to undertake looking at housing affordability here in the city, the COG staff was really instrumental in helping us do our kickoff to that work and continue to be. So we're glad that we punch above our weight, and we're glad to be part of COG. So thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Great. All right. Next, we have public comments on voting items. We have one voting item this evening. It's the resolution adopting the 2018 Emergency Operations Plan. Do we have any comments on that? Seeing none, we'll move into our voting session. This is a resolution adopting the 2018 Emergency Operations Plan. Ron Hardy presented this plan to us last week. Does someone want to move the resolution?
Move.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Smith, any discussion or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? All right? Then when the resolution passes. Now we have public comments on other topics, and I think we had one resident who requested additional time, so if you want to go first?
Thank you for the extra time as well. I'm Jessica Landman from Ward 1, and I'm here this evening for Community Vision for Tacoma. The reason I'm here is to share some important information about the Tacoma Junction project. Now, the city staff decided that it was not going to look at NDC's site design that was initially submitted to Park and Planning for review until it was just declared complete. But we disagreed with that approach, and we got copies of the plans, hard copies of the plans, from Park and Planning, and we have carefully reviewed these documents, both the original design, the one that was considered by the City Council, and the revised design that is in process. And here's what I wanted to tell you this evening about the redesign, which of course is still in draft form and has not been formally accepted for review because there still are a number of remaining shortcomings with the design. It is substantially different from the one that the City Council initially approved. Indeed, I believe that it is so different that Tacoma Park City Council must really reevaluate it before we ask the Park and Planning folks to start, to complete the review process and start the shot clock on considering it. And here's why. In the first design, NDC overshot the allowable square footage by more than 20% because they had not done their homework on how much density was permissible at the site. So Park and Planning sent them back to the drawing board with their design. Now, NDC has drawn a new draft design, and it is roughly 10,000 square feet less than the original design, although the garage size is the same, the rest of the, of the commercial space is that much smaller. Now, you might say to me, "I thought you wanted a smaller building." And you're right, I did want a smaller building. But NDC did not really design a smaller building. They just lopped off square feet in the back of the building and then created in the back, above the garage back, above the garage, an open space area with a green roof that basically leaves the same tiny public space in the front and does nothing to address our concerns about the ungainly lay-by lane in the front. Now, why is this important? First of all, the developer told us during the course of the process that went before that you couldn't make a financial go of it with a 40,000-square-foot building, and that they had to have a bigger building, and that's why we couldn't have more open space. Now, either 40,000 square feet is viable, in which case they could give us the public space, or 40,000 square feet is not financially viable, in which case, why is this proposal still pending and using our time? I think the city needs to get to the bottom of that with NDC. Ask them to show you whether they have really found the financing for this project, or let's put it to bed. Now, the second issue is that this major redesign really cries out for the council to take a fresh look at the project. In your July resolution of last year, the resolution says that the site plan may be modified during the county development review process by SHA or at the request of NDC, any of which may warrant further assessment by the council to ensure that the project appropriately addresses its goal of creating an attractive, vibrant, and economically viable development. These changes definitely warrant a reassessment because of those factors. Now, a smaller project should be able to accommodate loading trucks better, but this one does not. A smaller project should enable us to create more public space, but this one doesn't. Instead, looking at the plans, it seems to create a private space, open space, in the back of the building that will be accessible only by paying patrons at the cafes and restaurants in the building. And that public, that private open space would be three times the size of the public space in the front of the building. This is clearly not in line with our racial equity and inclusion principles that were discussed a lot during the course of this process. So, since the developers do need to go back to the drawing board, they should take us along with them. They tried it alone, they came up with a bad redesign that is not equitable, attractive, and may not even be economically viable, and it will definitely garner opposition. So, my request for you tonight is, will you please take a look at the proposed redesign and see for yourselves how much it has changed and how it has not changed for the better? And if the developers can build a 20% smaller building viably, will you collaborate with them, as is foreseen in the development agreement, and tackle the changes to the design to make it work better for the community, working together in good faith, as provided in the documents? And please, will you agree to reevaluate the new design and adopt a new resolution before we ask Park and Planning to invest substantial public resources in reviewing a project that the city ultimately will not really like? Thank you.
Great. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Piersall. I'm, I agree with what Jessica is asking you to do. I, I think the way to think about this is that the first plan that was submitted is essentially gone. It's dead. It's invalid. And even though we spent all that time and we reviewed it, it just is not going to happen. It is invalid. It's, the density far exceeded what was allowed. And so, we're at the point now, we have a drastically new design, which is essentially our site plan, which I believe you really do need to review and approve before it goes forward, because the other one is just dead. So, please do review this plan and bring it forward and have a discussion, and then send it off to Park and Planning. I think that is the proper way to do it. You know, there's been an awful lot of confusion about this and not being able to get plans, and I think, honestly, the city should have a set of both of these plans. There's no reason why you would not. And this developer is your agent, and you should have them. So, you should be sharing them and looking at this and seeing if there are opportunities for improvement. This 12,000 square feet is a lot of square feet of space that was opened up. So, let's see if there's a way to rearrange things, to have more public space, for example. Could be, this could be an opportunity to get things away from the trucks and the lay-by and all of this. But nevertheless, whatever you do, it's important you do it, because it's a process issue, in my mind. It's incredibly important for you to review it and to share it and to not be afraid of it, not hide it. We really must look at this. This is the first valid effort that we have now going forward. And it's, so I implore you to bring it back, and please don't make Park and Planning go through their rigorous process, and then we tell them, oh, wait, it has to get reviewed. Technically, I think it does, because it's been so majorly changed, not by them, but by the developer himself. So, thank you. And Mayor Stewart, I have a question. There's another item I want to speak to. Can I just speak to that?
You have 20 seconds.
Okay. Oh, I do? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the college resolution, I just want to vote my support for that going forward, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Paul Krzyszowski, 7708 Tacoma Avenue. My household is well-represented here tonight. You are all aware of the fact that there are major stormwater issues in Tacoma Park. In fact, stormwater is now a Green Team priority. But one of the biggest stormwater problems we have here is the lack of information available to residents and the lack of opportunities for public involvement in stormwater permitting and management. With Montgomery College and NDC, we are facing two of the largest construction projects ever undertaken in Tacoma Park. These projects have serious implications for stormwater and groundwater management. Water management for these projects is regulated solely by the city. However, residents around these projects and the friends of Sligo Creek have numerous questions about the impacts of these projects with no way of getting answers. This council recommended that Montgomery College involve the community in its stormwater planning. The college declined that recommendation and even refused to provide copies of its stormwater management plan to nearby residents. When I contacted the city to get help on this, I was told that the city manager with the side of staff would help the residents with these stormwater issues involving the college construction. I have not yet heard back on this, and in fact, have not been able to obtain copies of the city's drawings for the stormwater features around the college for my own evaluation. It is unfortunate that this council did not require the city's staff to involve the community in this, as they did ask the college to involve the community. Regarding NDC, it took months to get information about the stormwater management plan that they submitted almost a year ago. In fact, it was so difficult that one resident had to go to Public Works and photograph the file, because it was so hard to get information. In both cases, I have been asked by residents and others to help interpret the stormwater management plans and answer technical questions about stormwater impacts, the property, and the environment. It is so difficult for people to get this information from the city that volunteers like myself are needed to step in and fill this role. And in fact, I invite all of you for a tour of North Tacoma to see our stormwater issues up there. However, even with a cursory review of the stormwater plans for these two projects, I have identified problems with both of them as far as stormwater is concerned. It would be much more appropriate for the city to post these plans on its website, have public information sessions for council and impacted residents, and take comment. In fact, it would probably be best for a public hearing to be held for large, for permitting these large projects. There is no reason that stormwater management plans cannot be released to the general public, and nothing for the city to lose by informing the public about the potential impacts of these plans and city staff's decision-making process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
My name is Cynthia Mariel. I am speaking tonight about the submission by NDC to the county. I want to reinforce what Jessica Landman, as well as Lorraine Piersall, said. It doesn't matter what your views are in terms of supporting the junction development or opposing it. What matters is that you're our elected officials. This is a major project. It is an investment of tax dollars, and it is your fiduciary responsibility and beyond your elected, all of your responsibilities as elected officials to responsibly review this submission, which is significantly changed from their original contract you had with this developer. This is not the first major change, not the first major action that the developer has taken, supposedly unknown to the city. And just like you would do with any contract, whether it was for your personal household or, in this case, for our city, you need, there have been changes. You need to call the developer back. You need to review these plans, and you need to assess whether this is what you agreed to. And you also need to do it in a public forum with a back-and-forth dialogue, as we've discussed, and you, council, indicated interest in last week, that we, the citizens, and you, the council, need to have dialogue, and we need to increase opportunities for that. But all of you voted on this proposal, whether it was for or against, all of you are responsible now to review the submission and to answer to the citizens and to question NDC. Why have these changes been made? This is not what we contracted for.
Any other public comments tonight?
Thanks for coming in the rain. Mary Jaimon Chiu, Ward 2, 404 Boyd Avenue, parents of special needs, adults, if you know someone who's in that category, you don't have to be a parent, just a loved one of someone with a dad, adult, or older teen with special needs, please contact me. Also, I guess that's my main thing, but I'd also like to stand up for people, lower-income homeowners. There's, I see a lot of people trying to stick up for low-income renters, but there are low-income homeowners also. I'm one of them. And as far as racial equity, I see more or less black homeowners now than when I lived here, moved here 32 years ago. It's like the darker-skinned people are in the apartments, and there's more and more white wealthy people moving in the homes. And Ritchie Avenue, there seems to be almost completely black. They had a black church there. It's gone. I noticed, there was a block and a half from my church, there was an African-American church there that's gone. They said they couldn't afford the rent. They upped the rent. Now, there's people from India who are wealthier, as far as I can see, don't even live in Tacoma Park, bought the church, and are living there. That seems to be the memo, unfortunately. All the poorer people get kicked out. And I'm sorry, I'm going to fight. Every day, I get something, a notice, and I even get phone calls trying to sell, buy my house. But where in the hell I'm supposed to go? I mean, you know, you know, it's, I used to like my neighborhood, the way it was, but now I walk down the street, and I smile, and I'll say hello sometimes. People just walk by, and they don't acknowledge me, or they give me a scowl even, or they're on their cellphone, they act, don't even, I mean, you don't have to give me your life history, you don't even give me your name. Just nod, for God's sake. I'm walking this close to them, and they don't even acknowledge my presence by nodding? I mean, I'm sorry. Anyways, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Chiu. Any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Any council comments this evening? No council comments? All right, Councilwoman Kostick.
I'll go first. I can't remember if I announced this last week or not, but Ward 3 is getting the streetlight replacements to LEDs now. The process has gone through Ward 6, Ward 5, Ward 4, and now we're into Ward 3. It started last week and is expected to continue between four and seven weeks, based on weather and other factors. If you notice a, that the light is, a new light is shitting into your house, you can contact Public Works, you can contact me, and we can add you to a list to receive shields. Public Works will be, is collecting a list, and will be distributing those at a later time. But we have a list running, and we can add you to it if that's an issue. Is now a good time to provide an update on legislative things, or do you want to do that later?
Sure, you can do that now, since you have the mic.
Great. I also wanted to provide an update on the state bill on 410, which Senator Will Smith put forward. We had asked him to put it forward to prohibit an additional lane on 410, Philadelphia and Ethan Allen Avenue in Tacoma Park. And over the past few weeks, we, as a council, council members have been contacting members of the Montgomery County delegation, advocating on behalf of the bill and seeking people's support. We've also been talking with our county lobbyists, or our state lobbyist, and getting her opinion and feeling the waters out a little bit. And unfortunately, there has been opposition to the bill, and it does not, did not look like it was going to be moving forward. So, we consulted with the state lobbyist, and it appeared that the best way to move forward was to ask Senator Smith to withdraw the bill, which he did earlier this week. And this is obviously not the hopeful outcome that we had expected or hoped for, but we felt, based on the discussions that were had, that it was the best alternative, given the constraints and the lack of support from other members of the Montgomery County delegation. I do want to be clear that our delegates and Senator from District 20 have been very supportive and very helpful with this bill, but there was opposition throughout Montgomery County, because primarily, there has been interest in getting behind and having a united front focused on opposing the widening of the Beltway. And so, there's a desire among the delegation to have that united front and a common voice supporting a bill that would prevent that from moving forward. And so, Senator Smith withdrew this bill. We feel like that's the best strategy moving forward, so that we still have options in the future, and hopefully could consider something like this again and not have it be voted down, not have a record of having it be voted down by a larger group. So, what I would ask is that we, as a council, also consider taking a position on the Beltway widening, and we do, we would need to pass a resolution, taking a position on that. We haven't taken a position previously. As many of you know, the widening of the Beltway would have a number of detrimental effects, ranging from environmental impacts to increasing the number of cars driving on all of the streets, including probably our own in Tacoma Park. The equity issue of investing in toll lanes versus public transportation, for example, and, I can't remember if I mentioned before, the destruction of property as well. So, I would ask that we, as a council, would consider adding this to the agenda, hopefully as soon as possible. Next week would be ideal, so that we could take a position on it, and then we would be able to weigh in, in support of the bill that the Montgomery County delegation will be uniting behind.
Since this is a time-sensitive issue, to be able to take a position on this so that it's done in time for us to send a letter up to Annapolis and letting them know we support the bills against the widening of the Beltway, could I just get a hand vote this evening that folks are okay to add this to our, a resolution to our agenda next week? Councilwoman McCovar?
Can I ask a question before we do that? I support the idea of the Beltway resolution. I just think it's important for us also to talk about maintaining the commitment to not widening Route 410 and potentially working with State Highway or in other ways, if there is further action on Tacoma Junction reconfiguration or other activity along those lines, so that, while it's disappointing that the bill's not going forward, we want to continue exploring ways of making that point. So, I would, I don't see the Beltway bill as preventing that. I just don't want to have that lost in this discussion.
Great. All right. Can we just get a hand vote? Everyone okay adding a resolution to our agenda next week? Can we just get a hand vote, everyone okay adding a resolution to our agenda next week? All right, I see everyone, all right, so we will do that for next week. Any other updates? Okay, great. And I just want to also add to that, the Montgomery County delegation also pulled a bill by Delegate Carr regarding another issue that they felt that our bill and Delegate Carr's bill would, you know, basically everyone wants to focus on the widening of the Beltway and efforts there. And so, just to let folks know, our bill was not the only one to get pulled. All right, Councilmember Smith?
Two things, one, next week I will not be here, I will be in the Seattle area visiting family, and I hope the resolution regarding not supporting widening the Beltway includes something that says that it does not work. When you add more lanes, it, all it does is bring more traffic, and the best example is that is the Los Angeles area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember McCovar?
I'm sorry, me?
Yeah.
Oh, I just pressed the button.
I know.
My thumb was twitching. Couple of things, and maybe, I don't think, Ms. Lello, this is in the, your remarks, print it out, but maybe you can just comment on it, because I have gotten some questions about it either now or when you do your presentation, just on how the timing for the transfer of the REC Center looks going forward. We had talked about the July 1 completion of that process, which I think is okay, but if you wouldn't mind just saying a couple of words about that, you can do it now or later, whatever's easiest.
Why don't I send out information, just I want to confirm all the dates to it, but, but certainly the concept is that we would be having the City Council take action to dispose of the, the Jackson Avenue property and to, and then Park and Planning's Commission has to do their action to dispose of the REC Center property with those both being effective on July 1. Our, the resolution that council passed before has been transmitted to the, to Park and Planning, so that's, we're on the same timeframe.
Okay, just two other things, thank you. There was a really, I thought excellent meeting this past week, and, and the mayor and several other council members were also at it, which was sponsored by the All Tacoma Business Association, and it was a cross jurisdictional boundary meeting that involved not only some of us on the council and the mayor, but also, well, the mayor's on the council, but, us on the council, but also DC Ward 4 Council member Brandon Todd and several of the advisory neighborhood commissioners from the district, and there's a group of newer ones this year, newly elected ones this year. And what, the purpose of the meeting was to hear from businesses both on the Tacoma Park side and the Tacoma DC side, and I think it was a really great initiation of that type of cross border meeting. I think there, there could be a lot of positive cooperation resulting from that, and I think, really, it just kind of laid the initial groundwork, but I think it'll be a good collaborative approach going forward. And just, I wanted to touch base briefly on, on some of the comments that the, that the residents made regarding Tacoma Junction and the, and the revised project. I, I do have a concern that if we allow or acquiesce in the county working on the new submission, if it is in fact substantially changed from where it was previously before we've had a chance to vet it, then that puts us in an awkward position, number one, where the county is looking at something that we haven't approved, a minor change would be a different story, but this is a fairly substantial change based on the reports that we received. And really, I mean, just in, in fairness to the county staff, asking them to spend a lot of time on it, if it may come back to us and we may want changes, I don't think that's the path we want to go down. So, I would say we should have the document made public as soon as we can and then we can assess what we want to do. That would be my view. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of different things, so last Saturday, a number of residents, thank you, City Manager, for attending on a Saturday morning. Yeah, so we had a, we had a really, a good discussion about, among Ethan Allen residents about not just the 410 bill, but about living on Ethan Allen and all the things that that brings with it from potholes to sidewalks to. Which leads me to one of the questions that people asked, and when you have a chance, when you, when you know more from State Highway about their plans, I understand from what you said Saturday that we don't know all the details yet, but when you, when you can, it would be great to fill people in on that set of plans. So, so I haven't forgotten about the State Highway process in the junction, and neither have the residents on Ethan Allen Avenue apparently. And I also wonder if, if there would be, not tonight, but again, sometime in the future, near future, just a refresher on the county planning process and where the city would have been involved, would, if, would be involved in any case, you know, whether there's one plan, two plans, whatever, for any given proposal, there's a county process, there's places where the city is always active in the process, so perhaps we could get, get a refresher on that.
So, this is a refresher of the city's role in county processes, reviewing plans and of different kinds, not the State Highway vision project.
Right, two, two separate questions.
Okay, but yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that's it, thanks.
Great. Anyone else?
All right, moving forward, just reminding people, Play Day is this Sunday, this afternoon here, and I don't know if folks saw the notice, but our state Senator, Will Smith, is unfortunately going to Afghanistan in March. He is an officer in the United States Navy Reserves and he has received his orders to deploy to Afghanistan in March of this year. And so, just wanted to give people notice of that. And so, and I think, I think everybody else, going last, everybody else says everything. So, oh, lunch, Friday, this Friday at
Massa Kunda.
Massa Kunda, we have lunch at noon.
Flower and Erie.
Flower and Erie, so join us there. All right, and we did the legislative updates, I'll turn it over to the City Manager now.
Oh, thank you. I have a number of announcements, pieces of information to share. During the week of February 11th, next week, the city staff will be conducting emergency preparedness exercises. Exercises will take place here in the community center, at the Public Works facility, and at the New Hampshire Avenue REC Center. Obviously, we'll be getting lots of notices out, we'll have notices on the doors, we're contacting parents of kids in the programs when they may be affected, because we know that they can be scary things, so we're trying to minimize that kind of intrusion, but just wanted to give the heads up that, that those will be coming. I want to note that we've hired a new deputy police chief, Andrew Powell, will be joining the city on March 4th, being sworn in officially on March 6th, before the City Council meeting. He's a 23-year law enforcement veteran, he currently serves as commander of the Bureau of, of Support Services for the Riverdale Police Department. He holds a bachelor's degree with honors in management and a master of science degree with honors in organizational leadership, both from Johns Hopkins University. He's completed a number of prestigious law enforcement programs, he's received many awards and commendations, and so we're looking forward to him. It was noted by a resident that we hadn't discussed publicly that our previous deputy police chief, Antonio Williams, is no longer with the city. He resigned for personal reasons about five weeks after he started, and so, we're moving on. Like to note that this past Monday was the last day of Sarah Dane's employment with the city as the Director of Housing and Community Development. She's been with the city for 17 years, worked with her all that time, she's contributed greatly to the organization in many, many ways. She helped set the course for appropriate zoning, infrastructure development and marketing of the Tacoma Langley area and of the New Ave, the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. She professionalized our housing and our planning services in the city. And I think one of the things that many people know her well about is that she really helped create and brand Tacoma Park as an arts location, as a wonderful supportive community for those in the arts and humanities. I'd also like to note that things people didn't know about her was that she was really helpful internally within city management, particularly regarding financial management. She, because of her strong work, it contributed to our reputation of good fiscal management, and it's something that I've valued for many, many years. We're fortunate to have had her service for 17 years, we wish her best going forward. We do have three community development managers, one for housing, one for planning, one for economic development, that are pulling together with me to identify the transition. I think there's a lot of discussion that we will be having with the council about activities and implementation steps moving forward. We don't want anybody to feel like if they're trying to contact us, that we left handing, hanging, we're there for them, and we want to make sure that services are, are met and, and we will try to pick up the slack with the, with that hole that's been left with Ms. Dane's departure, but I wanted to note that. Wanted to, you've discussed the 410 bill, so I'll, I'll pass on that. I want to note the recreation camp registration was opened on Monday. It's so popular, and within the first four hours, 62% of the spaces were taken. Approximately 10% of the camp registrants received scholarships. I did ask the recreation director if there has been an impact on their need for scholarships by people who might have been hindered by the federal government furloughs and shutdown. It's not clear that that has happened a lot, although two families have withdrawn from some of the programs, they felt that, that they just didn't want to, they were nervous about it, even though we offered assistance. Non-resident registration for summer camps begins Monday on February 11. One of the things that we talked about several years ago had to do with yellow curb painting and whether it should be in the city, and the council has said no to yellow curbs. Instead, we have tried a pilot program with pavement markings that kind of help provide a place to stop so that driveways are not blocked. That seemed pretty successful in the pilot areas that we've done it. We plan on developing a process to identify when we do that, both proactively and at request by residents. So, we'll be coming back to you with those details, but we would like to just go ahead and start working on those areas before those, before formal procedures are adopted by the council, unless I hear objections from, from you. So, it seemed, in just talking with folks, it seemed like it was okay to go ahead, but I also do want to emphasize that I appreciate the concern about equity and how we proactively look at the places where we think it's safest to, to mark around driveways and corners and those kinds of things. We had a wonderful opportunity zone bus tour yesterday, and it was sponsored by the Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation and the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond. They hosted a workshop and bus tour, it was an all-day workshop intended for investors and developers, as well as others with business interests in Montgomery County. The primary goal of the workshop was to educate attendees on how to benefit from opportunity zones and show the opportunity zones, which Tacoma Park is in. All three of our community development managers attended and served as subject matter experts. Samira Cook Gaines, by all accounts, did a great job showing off Tacoma Park, the Tacoma Langley area and along New Hampshire Avenue, and already we're, we think we've got some seeds planted to, to follow up on things. So, that was, I've heard from other people that they said, I think you mentioned Mayor, that it was a really good program for that. And I don't know why it's taken so long to have those kind of things, but, you know, this is one of these times when suddenly Montgomery County realizes we're in Montgomery County. So, I appreciated that, that we had that opportunity. One of the things that's also going on in our community are people buying multifamily buildings, trying to sell them, selling them and trying to buy them, and part of the city's law and the county's law is a tenant opportunity to purchase. In the, I think it was several months ago when we found that, we kind of found that we had had some of these, that we missed deadlines on, that we needed to develop a process so that we tracked them, we had plenty of time to respond to them, that process has been put into place, we've got a good checklist. And so, one of the things that I'm suggesting here is that when these come before us, that I mentioned them in the City Manager comments, and one of the things the staff will do is identify if there's a recommendation to have the city take advantage of the opportunity to purchase if the tenants don't want to. If we have a recommendation to do it, we would want to schedule a work session discussion with you. If not, I'm just listing it here so that you still can do that if you wish, but I did want to let you know about one, which was 7905 Lochne Avenue, which is a four-unit building, there's a sales price of $505,000. Our recommendation is to decline, to have the city purchase, but I will say that there are some other properties that we believe will be coming forward, that do have some opportunities to advance some of the goals the council's talked about with housing. So, we should be seeing those actually within the next two months or so. So, I would just wanted to let you know that that's, we may be, that housing fund may get used in a dramatic way, so I'd love to, to follow up with you with some of the criteria that we're looking at, and there'll be plenty of discussions over the next couple of weeks as you talk about the, the housing strategic plan and the economic development strategic plan.
Can I ask a question? The four units, what are they, rent stabilized, are they some other form of
It's rent stabilized, and it will maintain that.
And that was the second question.
Yes, they stay.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Given that there's usually a pretty quick turnaround for those types of things, perhaps maybe bringing the criteria to council that has been developed sooner.
Yes, we've been just talking about that today.
Yes, excellent. And one of the other things that are, gosh, was it just last night we had our priorities meeting?
The night before.
And the conversation we had last night about tax duplication, seeing Ms. Elridge in the off, in the office, in the audience tonight, and her comments, I think just last week regarding this, I just want to urge us as the county executive does take a look at his budget right now, and he's doing his listening tours, and I know a number of residents have been attending them, that we as a council send the county executive a note regarding tax duplication.
Using his words against him.
Well, and, and reminding him, in, I think it was September of 2012, he stood right here and talked about how unfair tax duplication was to the city of Tacoma Park and how we provided, you know, services to the residents here and probably did it cheaper or less expensive than the county could. So, yeah, I think we should, we should do that soon. All right, now moving on to our work sessions, we have a discussion of a resolution amending Resolution 2018-63, this is regarding the Montgomery College Math and Science Building, to clarify that no change in the width of the Fenton Street right-of-way is needed by the city. Does City Manager go over that?
Yes, thank you. On December 5th, the council passed Resolution 2018-63 regarding the plans for the Math and Science Building on Montgomery College campus. As it went through and is going through the Montgomery County mandatory referral process, one of the, the planning staff folks said, well, you know, does the city want to take this opportunity to widen the right-of-way to the amount that is in the table in the master plan? And it caught us a little bit by surprise because it didn't seem like that was a place that widening was needed, but we went back to look, and there's two elements, one is that in the master plan, there's a table of rights of way that are kind of special rights of way and recommended widths. These widths are to accommodate vehicular travel, pedestrians, bicycles, utilities, like any other right-of-way. And when the Tacoma Park master plan was adopted in 2000, there was not, there were categories for arterial roads and then kind of residential roads, but there wasn't a minor arterial road, so Fenton was classified as an arterial road with a recommendation of an 80-foot right-of-way width. That's very large. That's, it's not quite as wide as New Hampshire Avenue, whatever, but, you know, it really isn't in the vein of, of how we use roads. whatever, but you know, it really isn't in the vein of, of how we use roads, and it is way, is much larger than, than our standard that we use when we talk with folks about appropriate widths of rights-of-way. We routinely do consider changing rights-of-way when there are subdivision applications, we look to see, are there, you know, especially if there's not sidewalks on both sides, or that kind of thing, that's, we evaluate that. In this case, we've got sidewalk, we got Metropolitan Branch Trail, which hadn't been built at the time that the master plan was done, but now it's installed there. It's clearly not an area that we need high-speed travel, so if you widen the road, you're going to get people zooming past the college, and it's not something that made sense for the development plan. However, since this is a time when it can be considered, it does, and because Park and Planning raised it as part of their mandatory referral consideration, I feel that it's appropriate for the council to take action that just simply says, we're declining to use this opportunity to widen, to request the, to demand that the right-of-way be widened. Does not preclude you from doing it at another time in the future if there were a need, but it is, I think it just is important to have it in the record that you're declining to request an increase in the right-of-way width at this time. So, I recommend that.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. Just a few questions. I'll say first, my overall sense is that this resolution makes sense, and that, my overall sense is it makes sense, and we ought to go forward with it, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of points, if you don't mind. So, when the master plan was originally adopted, was part of the problem that there was only kind of a one-size-fits-all thing about an arterial, is that why, why they would have done that, do you think?
Well, now they
Or was there something else in mind with it?
A couple of things. One is, I think Fenton was seen as a fairly significant connector between, say, the Tacoma Metro and downtown Silver Spring. There wasn't the category of minor arterial, so that, even if there had been, they may have chosen that at that time, but even that is still a 70-foot wide width, which is too wide. So, I'm not sure.
Do you know how wide it currently is from, say, the fence of the railroad, the grass, the Metropolitan Branch Trail, the sidewalk, the street, and then the other sidewalk, and maybe grass strip? I mean, that may be like 45 feet or something like that, would you say?
I can't tell you exactly from where the, where that fence is, so I'd have to find out.
It might be nice just to have that before.
I'll pass that along, yeah.
But so, in other words, we can just not do this?
That's right.
And, but we're, are we, what are we actually giving away then? Are we giving away anything in terms of ownership of the, of the street, or control of the street, or if someone wanted to block the street off, we get to decide whether it gets blocked off? Any of that disappear as a result of this?
No, it stays the same right-of-way, it stays the same ownership. If it were widened, what it would mean is that the property line would move back, our right-of-way would be wider, we'd have more maintenance to do, and it could, it could encourage at some point, probably some other staff and some other council to have more pavement out there. None of those things.
But it struck me that if, if we were to widen the, the right-of-way, even not necessarily all the way to 80 feet, but to some extent, the most likely kind of shorter-term, more immediate impact would be, is going to push against the footprint of the proposed college building, which would either mean, that would move further toward the residences, or toward the intersection, both of which we've been trying to prevent against, or encourage them to make it higher. I mean, if anything, pinching them in is going to affect that potentially, right?
If this were a private property,
Right.
It would have different implications, but as a, as a publicly-owned property, it, that goes through mandatory referral, which does not have the same kind of requirements, it wouldn't make much difference.
Okay. But can we just have a, if it's easy to get before next week, just a drawing of where it currently is?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Just so we can see where it falls.
And it, and it goes back and forth,
Right.
And there's different lines, but we'll, we can provide you that.
Okay, thank you, but I, but I do support adopting it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I think you might have just answered the question I had. But is this because it is a publicly-owned property? Because my initial thought was, how can you, how can you increase the right-of-way without basically taking property from someone? But if, if it is a publicly-owned property, that's, that's why there is this opportunity, is that correct? I mean, otherwise, I assume you would be looking at like some sort of eminent domain
That's right.
Taking property from someone.
That's right, it would do that.
Okay.
It would be that, but because it's publicly owned, as part of a mandatory referral, through mandatory referral, it's more of persuasion and agreement than it is taking in the same way.
Okay. And so, this sort of, the same opportunity doesn't come up if someone is building on private property, and they're going through the, a county process?
Let's say this, let's say this was a, a private property, trying to do this, then we could take the land, but we would have to compensate them for that land.
Okay.
It would just be that it would be supported as an action because it's identified in the master plan.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Great, any other questions or comments? All right, then we'll bring that back to vote on next week. Next, we have FY 2019 budget amendment number three. I think I'm turning this back over to the City Manager again.
Thank you. Yeah, it's all my night, huh?
Uh huh.
What we have before you is the, is kind of the work session without the ordinance, that the ordinance, I think, is ready for posting. It's up now, okay. Basically, what we are doing is, is we're going through the, as part of budget, we're making sure that where our lines are, and our accounts are, and we do not want to have something where we're, have strange numbers to budget from. If we know that something is going to be delayed, the number, the base number is going to be changed, it's easier for us to do it now, and then provide budget information to you, than have major changes later on. So, we have a number of delays in hiring, or delays to projects that have slowed these various items down. We wanted just to clean that up. I'm happy to answer any, answer any particular question, but almost all of these are delays in projects, or delays in hiring for a variety of reasons. There's a few different ones. There's the additional expenses for, for example, the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk project are identified, that had already been discussed with the council, but put in, in here, accommodating the Safe Road to Schools funds that were received for that. There's a little bit of time delay on the Ethan Allen project, that just tipped it into the FY 19, as opposed to just pre, to the previous year, and the Flower Avenue Green Street project, which is being delayed by a couple of months. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them now, or I can, you can contact me separately by next week.
Great, Councilwoman Kostic?
I just have a quick question, and I, I was just pulling up the budget here, I haven't had any chance to look at it, but you noticed the council intern position. I thought we had decided to remove that during the budget process.
I think that's, I think that was somehow an error in the document, in our, in our accounts, as opposed to, certainly, I had the same question.
Yeah.
I was like, it's, I think it's just somehow it didn't get removed from a certain location.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I want to make sure I, I get this, so that, so the, the funds
go into the fund balance, and then they are carried over to next year?
Yes.
To be used next year?
Right.
For the exact same thing?
Yes or no? You guys get to decide through the budget process. So, part of this, any, I mean, what this does is it makes it really clean to identify what kind of remaining funds are available that help reduce the amount of tax money that you have to assess for the next budget, depending on, on your mix of, of requests. But it's just identifying, we know we're not going to be spending a certain, certain amount, so we're just making that clean for you and for us, as we go into the actual budget preparation process.
So, for the, for the projects, like Gateway Project, well, that's a bad example, like the Library Project, the Flower Avenue Project,
Right.
The expectation is that we will have that expense next year.
That's right.
But for the salaries, the
So, I mean, there, there are certain ones, such as, it took us, it took us longer to get the Economic Development Manager on board. That is money that we're not, she's going to be on board for next year, we'll be budgeting for her for a whole year, but those funds that we didn't spend could go elsewhere.
Yeah, I guess that, I guess that was my question, was how many of these, how much of this
Are continuing and
Is continuing, and the assumption is, we're not going to stop the Flower Avenue Project in the middle of it, so clearly we're going to be using that money next year, even if it's in the fund balance right now. So, how much of this is that, and how much of this is
I'll check and have that information for you.
Okay, and then I just wanted to make sure, could you just say that again, for the listening folks at home, about the Lincoln Avenue Project? So, we, we, we got grant money in this year for state, from State Highway, is that right?
From the, from, yes, from the Safe Road to School
Okay.
Process.
Plus, we also had additional construction costs, not a rollover, but an addition.
That's right.
And the addition was for
There was a reason for it, but I'm not remembering right now what it was.
It was a more expensive project than we originally thought, because of certain retaining walls and those kinds of things.
Right, it was the retaining walls. Okay, thank you.
Great, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, this will come back for a vote next week. And I think, do you have something? Okay. Do you want me just to sit here? I think seeing nothing else, we will adjourn for the evening. Thank you, everyone.